I will call this school committee meeting for May 12th to order. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, free and fair, and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll start with introduction of members.
Charles Dunson.
Ted Novio.
Tara Larkin-Milville.
Madison Marsham-Blackstone.
Carrie Goddard-Blackstone.
Dan Keefe-Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux-Blackstone.
Erin Bonacco-Milville.
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And we'll do our student rep update.
Okay, so tomorrow night is the first performance of the drama club's Once Upon a Mattress. It starts at 7:00 PM, and then they have another performance on Saturday at 4:00 PM. Softball has their senior night on the 23rd. It got moved. It was originally the 19th. The baseball senior game, that's on the 13th, so tomorrow as well. Then we have our community event this Sunday, 1 to 4. Then the NHS induction is May 19th at 7:00 PM. And then I have a long list of graduation events, so bear with me. Starting Friday, May 20th, we have our senior banquet at Arrowhead Acres. Friday, May 27th is our last day. Monday, May 30th, no one has school. Tuesday, May 31st, we get our caps and gowns. Wednesday, June 1st, we have our senior class trip to Newport. Thursday, June 2nd is awards night, and then we like tour the district in our gowns. And then Friday, June 3rd, we graduate.
How was prom?
It was fun.
Was it a good turnout?
Yes.
Great. Any other questions today? I actually have a question. Are we considering a rain date for graduation just based on the uptick in?
Ms. Fowless is saying no.
I see Jill's head.
We'll move to the inside, to the gymnasium.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah. No worries. Who is the, I have a question. Who is the best faculty dancer at the prom? Any good moves?
Okay.
Important questions.
This is true. None of them really hit the dance floor.
Oh.
Except at the end, I saw Ms. Martino and Ms. Hunt, our advisors. They were busting their groove thing out there. Like, the last 10 minutes, they were hitting the dance floor.
Good, that's good to know. That's awesome.
Yeah.
And how many days until?
Oh, I lost track.
You did?
It's gotta be like 13 now, maybe.
At least.
Yeah. It's quick. Very quick.
Exciting.
But, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think this actually.
Yeah, because the next meeting's a workshop, right?
Yeah. We will let you know about our next meeting.
Okay.
We might have to have you there as a guest of honor, but we might be switching it over to, from a meeting to a workshop, but we might still have you come in.
Updating.
It was the last update.
Sounds good.
But we will be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, we have consent agenda A warrants and minutes of meeting, the meeting for April 28th, which Monique sent over through email.
Did everybody see the packets here?
I don't know if I've gotten past around yet.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion for consent agenda A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan and second by Tara. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll open for public forum if there's anyone here that wanted to address the committee for items that are not on our agenda. And then we will move on to student recognition, which is under school committee, but I will let you call our students up. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. I think absolutely the highlight of our meeting this evening, I always love, and I know the school committee does too, we have an opportunity to celebrate the great work of our students. And we're gonna, we have two different kind of groups, I guess, if you will, of students that we're gonna represent, recognize tonight, excuse me, and I'm gonna actually ask that Ms. Fowless join us up front. And she is going to introduce our students. We have certificates for them and some flowers, and they're for different things, so we're gonna start with the students who successfully participated and completed in the Blackstone Valley Youth Leadership Program, which is a fantastic program that really does help kind of hone in on the leadership skills of our high school students. One of our members did here. I will let you, oh, okay. So I will let you introduce them, and maybe they can come up and talk a little bit about their projects.
In alphabetical order. How about that? So Ashley Johnson, come on up. She's a sophomore. So each part of the components, this is for ninth and 10th grade, and one of the key components is a community service project, so I'm gonna let Ashley tell you about what she did.
Hi, everybody. My name's Ashley Johnson, and I'm a sophomore at Blackstone Millville Regional. So my service project for the leadership committee was, I did a stock drive to the Wunsaki Homeless Shelter. What I did was, I set it up through our school. I talked to Mrs. Fowless and Mr. Ducharme, and asked them if I could put donation bins around the school, and they agreed to it. So I put donations in the upper B wing and the main office. And then the drive ran from February 28th to March 11th, and on March 11th, I got to leave school a few minutes early to bring the donation bins to the place. And I met with one of the volunteers, and his name was Axel. He was very kind, and he was very appreciative of the donation. And one thing I really took from it was the end speech at the graduation. A girl named Cardi Murray spoke, and her speech was very inspiring to me. She basically told us that you should be happy and proud of what you do, and I really took that into consideration. And I actually ended up speaking with her after, and I just thanked her for that. And overall, it was a great experience, and I do wanna thank Ms. Bransy for helping me get into it, so, yeah.
That's great. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
On May 3rd, we were up to the Ace of Waters house in Millbury, and all of the leaders, the youth leaders presented their projects. So I got to go around and look and meet, not only see the three projects that our kids did, but representatives from around the valley, and it was a great, very well spoken. And so Taylor Perry, come on up. So tell them what you did learn, and then what you learned from your experience.
So for my project, I did a food drive to the Blackstone Millville Food Pantry, and I emailed all of the principals from our four schools that make up our district, and I asked them if I could put boxes and posters around our school to help collect donations. And I donated over 300 pounds to the Blackstone Food Pantry on April 16th.
300 pounds.
That is a lot of food.
From the community, to stay in our community. What's one thing you learned from your experience in the leadership committee?
Just having to be more open and upfront and have a public speaker.
Well, you're doing a great job right now.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you're doing it wonderfully.
And then last but not least, so we did have a third member that is at play rehearsal, I think, right now, Riley. So we'll make sure to get Riley their certificate. But we have another honoree here this evening that we're gonna recognize, or something different. And I, as everyone knows, I'm part of the Worcester County Superintendent Consortium, and part of that, each year, we recognize a scholar from each school district in Worcester County. And this year, I not only had the pleasure of recognizing Christina Paterella, but I actually also was a speaker. So I got to introduce her to everybody at Holy Cross where we had the luncheon, which was really super. And it was definitely a proud moment to be able to hand the certificate over, and we actually were able to have a nice luncheon, Ms. Fowless, Christina and I. Although, I will tell you, I called because somebody was late, and I interrupted whatever the Taylor Swift song was, the two of them were singing in the car.
It was really Martin, but that's okay. We were definitely enjoying it.
So I think they had fun on their way to and from as well. But Christina, come on up.
And.
Again.
Thank you.
That's so great.
Do you want pictures?
Erin is the chair, or if any other committee members wanted to, certainly could do pictures with the students.
Come back up here. Ashley, yeah, come up. Do you wanna come up in front? No, no, it's okay. You guys go ahead. I can see you. Sarah.
It's Charlie.
Do I need to see it? How does it matter to you? Sorry.
What did I?
Thank you. No, you go up there. Did you get your picture?
I did my picture, yes.
Okay, well, is that? Was she gonna? Oh, Ms. Fowless, we should get a picture. Let's get one. Let's get one. Don't mind if we have to, or just like it. You can do something. Okay.
And also, we could just say a big thank you to their families, not only for being here tonight, of course, but for everything you've done to help your student along the way. So just very, very grateful for that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Back to you, Ms. Bonacco.
I'm actually adding. So next up, we have small capital working group update.
You don't have to stay for that, folks, unless you want. I can see in all the faces.
It's really exciting.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations. Have like too many files.
People are like, who's the capital working group?
So the capital working group met a few days ago now, and we looked at some items of priority from the larger report that we had for capital projects. And we chose a few projects on the punch list to focus on in the, you know, near future. The items that we would like to address are the playground repairs for both the complex and the Millville Elementary sites. This includes materials and grading work that may be, may need to be done. The second thing that we thought was a priority is the paving work that needs to be done at the middle school. Given the scope of this work, it will need to be put out to bid publicly. The walkway work at Millville Elementary will also be a project that should fall under the realm of three quotes. I'm using Matt's word there. And there is some work that needs to be done in the cafeteria ceiling tiles at the complex, and we have decided that those tiles are in the kitchen, and we could have that, those tiles removed over the summer. And sorry, the email thread, we can, Matt has asked to have an estimate to have that work done. So, and then, you know, we're just gonna kind of determine as this fiscal year ends what we can, what we can move to fund some of these things, and then decide, you know, at future date, where, how we're gonna fund and kind of go through it that way. But those are the things that we're focusing on from that group.
Yeah, the driveway project will probably be the largest of that group, so we discussed that as we come to, as Tammy mentioned, the, as we come to the close of the fiscal year, there may be some funds that we could put towards some of the playground work or potentially the walkway work. We still have to get bids for it, so I'm not 100% sure of the costs, but it's not in the scheme of doing the entire driveway. The last time we got a quote for repairing the driveway of the middle school, it was in the ballpark of $85,000. However, that was before the gas prices went to where they are, and asphalt now costs significantly more money, and so we have to put that out for public bid.
And then just one final note that I skipped was that the thought was on the playground repairs, potentially, we may be able to use some volunteer help to get that done as well, and we will have to look. I think the estimate at the time was $70,000 for each playground, and our, you know, the question was, for the ground materials, you know, how much more is that costing with the current climate of work products type things? So, but, you know, the thought was, maybe we could use some volunteer participation in doing some of that work as well. Maybe a nice eagle project or something like that that we can help with.
Now, this was the first meeting of the small capital working group?
Correct.
Did you schedule another meeting?
We didn't, because we felt like we're sort of in a hold until we see if our statement of interest is accepted. Because if the statement of interest is accepted, then much of the work that's on our list would potentially be combined in part of that project. So, you know, the thought was, would we, why would we do a project, spend money, and then redo the area that we just, you know, retrofitted or whatever? So we have agreed to kind of keep in touch via email for now, and then once we get the decision from mass building, we'll kind of see what else we should look at.
And Matt, just to refresh our calendars, when would we expect to hear from our statement of interest?
We would expect to hear back, hopefully, by the end of June into July. We also, another piece of that, we toyed with the idea of scheduling another meeting, but we decided, let's get the identified work out to bid first also, so, because we, as I mentioned, we don't really have those numbers, so we may very well schedule another meeting shortly, but it will depend on whether or not we get those costs back quickly.
So there'll still be work being done behind the scenes?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, yeah, all of those, so all of those pieces have been started in motion.
Anything else, Tammy?
No, that is all for that.
Thank you for that information and that update. Any questions for Tammy? Anything coming out of that smaller working group?
I may, is the driveway for this building, the school, is that in the statement of interest?
No.
Right, that wouldn't be part of the.
No. The statement, no.
No, it was for the high school.
For the high school.
Right, that's what I figured. So this, either way, this would have to be, either way would have to be addressed.
Which is why the small working group chose that as a major project, because no matter if it, if the statement of interest is accepted or not, potentially, this building will be used, and so that's work that we'd have to do regardless.
Yeah, I think, I think to be clear, it's not necessarily that we're waiting to do the work we just mentioned until the statement of interest comes back. We didn't wanna continue to meet to identify other projects and move forward on more things until we know what's going on with respect to the statement of interest. And in the interim, we have those pieces, as I mentioned, going out to try to get some estimates and more information on those.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, actually, I'm just going to stop here under school committee, which I could totally talk about at the end, but since we're early and fresh in our meeting. I did actually get in touch with Glenn Kuchar, who is our MASC rep. He's the director, actually. And being that we have four new members, he is willing to come out and spend some time with us, so instead of having all of you find a charting the course, and it's actually a good time where he would facilitate bringing us together, some team building. So he is actually available to come out when our next meeting is scheduled, which would be May 26th.
Six or seven.
Twenty?
26.
Thursday? I don't remember.
It's the 26th.
The only thing that would change would be our start time. So wondering if you all could check your calendars and see if a 4:00 PM time, if it's a little later for our tenured members, that might work too, where we could start with charting the course, and if you're coming in a little bit later, we could get a lot done. So how does that 4 o'clock on a Thursday work?
I may have to do the arrive a little later. I have a 2 to 4, I have a 2 to 4 project that I do with students on Thursdays.
All right. Would that work for you, Carrie?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is 4 o'clock okay?
I think so.
For one day?
It works.
All right, perfect. I think that that will work. We're going to do a little pre-planning on that, so I'll communicate that at a later time, but I just wanted to nail that date and time down for, so I'll reconfirm that with him tomorrow. All right, moving on to report of the superintendent.
Great, thanks. Before we jump into our first item, which is run handbooks, I just want to give an update. We had a meeting at our special education collaborative today. It's the Bye County Collaborative. For those who may not be as familiar with it, it's not a district placement that I think in our region, I believe there's 17 or 18 districts that are part of the Bye County Collaborative. And our last meeting, the board, school committee voted to have me continue to represent them on the board, which is pretty standard. Each district, school committee appoints the superintendent to sit on this board of directors for the collaborative. And today, we were having a budget discussion. We learned recently that the collaborative is in some financial stress right now because of lower enrollment. Their main revenue stream is students, a district sending those students to the collaborative. And they have not, they did not reach the enrollment levels that they were anticipating for this year. So the executive director of the collaborative recommended to the board of directors that each district pay a 12% increase on tuition for next year. I will tell you, I voted no on that. I am the only one who voted no. So we will now be seeing a 12% increase in our special education Bye County Collaborative tuition for next year. I did my best to argue essentially our case. Our budget's been done. Millville passed it. Blackstone, we hope, is about to pass it, but we're not, of course, we have to wait to the annual town meeting in a few weeks. And to give you a sense, we did budget for a 3% increase, right, in tuition. We assumed there would be some increase. So we have a 9% increase to close. The 9% increase is about $84,000. So we, we will be able to do that, because we'll be able to prepay the tuition costs, and we will actually have a formal item on an agenda coming up, either the next meeting or the meeting after, because the school committee would need to authorize that, that payment. But I will, I will tell you that I will continue fighting this issue. I did lose the vote, unfortunately, so there's not a lot I can do about that. But I have asked the executive director to go back and do a lot of work with her team to get the budget in line, because even with a 12% increase, they are still facing an $800,000 deficit that they will be able to cover out of free cash. The collaborative has enough in free cash. And the issue frankly has been this fiscal year, but it started in the prior fiscal year, and the finance director has recently just retired. So we have appointed an interim, who is a retired superintendent, who has a significant amount of financial background and experience. He also was a member of the board, the special education Bye County Collaborative Board at one point, and I am certain that we will be able to get this resolved. But I just want to make sure that the school committee is aware of some of the financial challenges that the collaborative is having, that we will get resolved, and the fact that we will see a 12% increase against my wishes, anyway. So more to come on that, but of course, questions?
Yeah.
Sorry, Tammy, go ahead.
Can I just clarify, the $84,000 difference, that's the 12%, or is that the 9%?
That's the 9%.
9%.
Because we already budgeted 3.
Okay.
So if you put the 3% on top of that, that's the total, that's the total no.
Of currently enrolled students.
That's right. That's right. And, you know, just, again, just for folks that are either tuning in at home or to our new members, to give a general sense that collaborative tuition can be a little bit fluid, because you have students that kind of come in and out of a collaborative at any given time. And so it isn't, you know, when we think about school, it's, you know, September to June kind of thing, and it's not always like that. So I think they've had some challenges trying to get their arms around the enrollment. I will tell you, there has not been a shortage of referrals. We have referred over about 260 students. Our normal enrollment, just so you know, is about between 230 to 40. We're down around 185, and it's not because we haven't referred. As a matter of fact, our own district has been very frustrated with the pace in which students have been screened, given tours, and essentially allowed into the collaborative. So I think there's some internal operational issues on the side of the collaborative that we are trying to, as a board, work with the executive director around. It's not from a shortage of referrals. So there is quite a bit, I think, of internal challenges that they're having as a team that we will remain very involved in to get resolved. I don't want the school committee to feel that we are in, you know, a financial dire strait situation. We're not, even with an $800,000 deficit in our collaborative, not in our district. Anyone watching? This is not our district. I don't want anyone at home that just tunes in late to get worried about that. It is the collaborative, but there is still over $1 million available in the free cash or excess and deficiency, even with that gap to close. So we, you know, the collaborative had a few very good years where they were able to build up, and the committee might remember, a couple of years ago, the collaborative actually refunded some of the money, because like regional districts, if you're over a certain percentage amount, you give the money back to your districts, in our case, our towns. And so we were in a situation where they were able to bring the tuition costs for that year down by a few thousand dollars. We are clearly not in that situation right now, and I do think it's an eternal issue on Byco's end and not enrolling kids.
So are there any, you're saying 220 referrals, but enrollments down? Are any kids missing out, are any kids missing? I mean, I guess for, and this board of directors is all of our superintendents, right?
Yep. And they're all coming from our system.
Right. So where are the kids? Where are they? Are they still within their own?
Some students are still in the school, some waiting placement. Some students have gone to other placements. And what we are hearing from the team, the leadership team at Byco, is essentially that, well, some of the student issues, you know, we're not necessarily equipped for, we don't have a program for. Well, then build the program. That's why you're the collaborative. And they're not building the program. So we are working with the board and the executive director and her leadership team to help get that resolved. I'm also a member of their strategic planning team. They're building their five-year strategic plan, and it has been very helpful to be part of that, because I can see kind of from the inside, some of the issues that are causing some of this. So we are very much aware, working with the leadership there to try to get it resolved. But I do want the committee to know that we have a plan to address the $84,000 gap for next year. So we are working with the board and the executive director and her leadership team to help get that resolved. I'm also a member of their strategic planning team. They're building their five-year strategic plan, and it has been very helpful to be part of that, because I can see kind of from the inside, some of the issues that are causing some of this. So we are very much aware, working with the leadership there to try to get it resolved. But I do want the committee to know that we have a plan to address the $84,000 gap for next year. It will require a vote of the committee, once we get all the numbers together and you get a sense of where that prepayment of the tuition would come from, which we're allowed to do. But I did vote no on the increase, just so you're aware. But I was the, the only one out of the 15 that were there.
Thank you for that update.
Can I just point, I just want to point something out. When, when we talk about budget and we talk about increases, and when there's like comparison to our trade school partners, this is over $100,000 difference here in a small number of students that other schools do not have as these kind of line items that increase. So when, when, when the comparisons are done, I just, I just want to point out that like this is $100,000 change, if you, if you include the original 3% that we counted for, that other trade schools don't, they don't have that population of students. So when we're trying to do our budget and where, you know, our number looks like it increases versus decreasing, it's things like this, not, you know, and not to put blame on these kids, but these are the things that kind of add up across that, you know, we have all these grade levels, we have all, all a, a more diverse student body in that way, and, you know, $100,000 here and there impact the bottom line that we're asking for from towns. So that's a, that's a big number.
And we really have no choice in paying it.
Oh, no. Yeah, we have to support our kids, and yeah.
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 And our, our tech schools don't have those line items. That's a good point.
And I, and I think, you know, somebody may say like shop around. It's not that kind of, it's not that kind of, it's not, you can't do that. You can't move a kid because you can save $1,000 somewhere else on the fly.
And this is our collaborative, so this is the least expensive, in most cases, the least expensive option for, for the district. And I will say, I'm so glad you said that, Tammy, because I would go kind of another step with that and say, it actually isn't, it has nothing at all to do with the kids, which I know that you know that, it's the adults leading that collaborative, and that issue will be addressed. I can say that for certainty.
If I may, Madam Chair, so what I'm hearing is they're charging an additional 12% because they don't have enough enrollment, but it's the leaders of the collaborative that are holding up the enrollment.
It's a fair assessment.
Okay. And they expect the districts to pay for those shortcomings?
Yeah, and, and the short version is if they needed to, the they being the collaborative, needed to increase tuition over time, I, I understand that. Like, I get that. We built in 3%. You don't increase tuition one year in 12, for 12%. And as far as the rest of the budget process goes, they have a lot of work still to do in terms of what they've cut and what they haven't cut. And what we did decide today was to table their budget, because we were not going to vote that. I thought that the, that everything was going to be tabled, and then there was a motion made to vote the 12%. It was seconded, and they took a roll call, and that was it. So it was that quick. So that went through, the budget's tabled, so that all could change still, but districts will still receive a 12% increase in tuition.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to add to Tammy's point, the towns don't ever see this end of, end of, you know, and in the budget end of things, where this, where, where the districts are kind of held in certain respects to certain, you don't, we don't have a choice.
Yep.
In the matter, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Sure. And I'll, I'll come back with an update, but I just wanted everybody to know, because that, that just happened today. It was this afternoon.
Breaking news.
Yes. The, the first formal item on my report this evening is actually a discussion on our student handbooks for next school year. So we've asked the principals to be here to present the handbooks to the school committee for review, and we hope approval. And we're going to start with the elementary schools. Dr. Remka, Ms. Schaefer, if you want to join us up front in your packets. And you, I know, we went a little heavy on the handbooks. We sent the electronic version on Saturday morning, then we sent the actual hard copy on Monday afternoon, and then we sent the rest of the packet on Tuesday. I just know there's a lot of, lot of information here, so we wanted to get it to you in a variety of ways, and everybody likes to read this stuff a little bit different, so.
I also handed out my voice. I also handed out another page when I came in, which is, we had just this teeny tiny little change, and we'll explain it when we.
Does this trump the one we were given?
Yes, it's literal, it's by five minutes on a time, that's it. But we wanted to give you the most updated thing.
And Christine, I'm glad you mentioned that, because in addition to the packet, you received just the cover page with the changes, so that you could, instead of kind of hunting and pecking through the whole thing, trying to figure it all out, we listed all the changes in one place.
So we're going to just kind of share. So the first, obviously, couple, the first two pages is just updating the, the year on the cover page, as well as updating school committee and any new positions and/or school committee members, as well as other positions within the district that need to be updated. And then the, just a general update is making it look a little pretty, so fixing up the spaces, making sure all the fonts are the same. And then it makes sure that they're the same size, the same style, all that. And then any of the policy COVID changes that have to be taken out, it's, a lot of them say like, see updated COVID policy, so we have to take all that out.
And then the table contents, want to adjust the appendix A to C in the handbook, but it's not on the table content, so we want to add that. And then the school calendar, put in the next year's school calendar in there. And then the bullying prevention intervention plan, page six and seven, independent update reflect the policy changes.
And the next part, the school hours and the tardy policy, so that's where we made the slight change. The time is the same, so MES is an 8:55 start time. When we did last year's, we were not sure about the busing with getting from one school to another, so that's kind of where, so that's going to be our time change. So we have the ironed-out process, and the complex will be 8:45 for supervision. And the tardy policy, that's where we made the slight change from the original you had. The, the student is considered tardy at the complex if they get in at 8:50, and at MES, if they get in at 9 o'clock. So our, our start time is five minutes prior, so there's a five-minute window to get in.
And then the educational programs, we added guidance, description of the program, and also STEM, because it's new this year, and we asked our STEM teachers to give us a description. And then also adding the interventions. We always have reading intervention, but we, we, this year is new for math, so we want both of them, description in the handbook.
And then for under program and studies under page 24, there's a minor change, but grade five was listed twice, so we just took out a grade, the grade five under PE. And then under special subject area, we just added those descriptions.
And then study habits and homework, we kind of went back and forth with that. I, it was like five minutes for kindergarten homework, because my grandson's in kindergarten, he has more than five minutes. But we did some research, and we look at, the district is pretty much come, same, you know, our time range. So on top of the homework, and we have that 15, from 15 to 20 minutes of reading, we, we expanded to 15 to 30 minutes reading.
And then the responsibilities regarding homework, we're just going to edit the underlined parent, and then capitalize the C and T. And then disciplinary measures, we changed through the entire document expulsion to exclusion. So we made that change throughout, anywhere that expulsion was in there.
And then bus change, changing bus, I guess in the past, they, they get bus to private lesson. I wasn't here for that.
I don't even remember that.
So we want to, we moved that line. And then cafeteria rules, because we, both school have PBIS, we want to replace that with the PBIS expectations.
So in the new handbook, there'll be a, the PBIS actual poster that we hang in the school, so the kids can actually, what they see in school will be in the handbook. Medication policy was just a minor change, so it said that it should be delivered to the school. It actually must be delivered, and this was, we spoke with Karen Young, our district nurse leader, for that change. And nonessential item, we have, and Dr. Remka can speak more to this, with the older grades more, so smart watchers are actually being used to like communicate with others versus, you know, just as town time. So that was just a minor change, kind of following the cell phone policy. And social invitations, we, because, and anybody that's been on the parents' organization know, we try to push PT board for, to, because you often have a lot of hurt feelings when invitations are handed out and kids are excluded from a party or whatever. So we're, we're encouraging, we adding a line about that they collect information for social invitation purposes, because parents have reached out and asked, how do I get invitations, because my child's class isn't on there? Our teachers are great at sending emails when we've gotten a couple from their class to say, hey, don't forget to sign your kids up for PT board, but we just wanted to make sure it was in another place for my parents to sign up for PT board, so that they can share that information. And that's all of our changes. Any questions?
And all the changes are approved by the school council.
Yeah, oh yes, sorry, we both presented to school councils as well.
So the busing change, where you're removing the wording for, are kids allowed to take a different bus if they need to?
So the handbook has always had a minimum of two weeks for if they go to like a childcare. So if they go to Boys and Girls Club, they can take the bus there. So that has been something that's been in the handbook for as long as I've been in district. And the, with the, especially, I'm thinking of early childhood building, a child's going to dance one day, and, you know, gymnastics another day, and this, and trying to keep those schedules is very hard for the kids, let alone the teachers, who have to do at times 20. So we want to make sure all of our kids get home where they need to be, or to the place they need to be, instead of worrying that, you know, Mary Lou got on the bus to, you know, Boys and Girls Club, but they were supposed to go home today. So we're trying to keep that consistent.
So it's a two-week?
It's a two-week request.
Okay.
And that's actually already in the handbook.
Any other questions for elementary school?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think you have to look at your page numbers again, because I, I just happened to look at the.
The page numbers have to be updated, sorry.
Oh, okay.
We should have set the.
Yes, we should have set that in the beginning. The pages need to be updated, because we.
Only because you noted it specifically, and then they didn't, that particular one didn't match, so I was like, oh, I hope.
So the page is actually referring to the old.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. I was like, oh, man.
So when we pretty it up, that's the other piece we're looking at, is making sure the pages align with the items.
Any other questions? Thank you for going through that.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kurt, if you would like to join us, we'll talk a little about the middle school. The middle school, I mean, I think next to, next to no changes. And it looks like the stuff that they did change will probably change again, once we go through the blueprint 2.0 and get that all updated.
Right. Sorry for my voice as well. So my, I very little change, it's just to have, so as we were looking through our handbook since I've been here, we pretty much have revamped and made all the major changes we needed, except we noticed that we did not have the vision, purpose, action, and work in our district core values from the blueprint, so that's the one change that we have before you, but I'm sure it's a little bit different from what we're going to be having with the 2.0, and I'm going to update that. And we just updated page numbers to make sure that they fit.
All right, any questions?
Mine is very simple this year. We've already tackled dress code, attendance, and all the major pieces over the last few years, so.
Well, that's, that's it. We've done so much work on these that, that now it's really just kind of a couple little quarter turns, quarter turns, excuse me, here and there, but we present them each year to the committee as required.
And if it's working? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Christine, I hope you feel better, too. And Ms. Fallis?
Hello.
I'm going to embarrass you, too, and let the committee know today's your birthday, and she's here with us.
Poor thing.
Happy birthday.
The whole day.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
It's been a wonderful day. I spent the afternoon with the softball team in Whiteman's Hill and the kids, and they were.
How did they do?
Three home runs.
That's amazing.
Lots of, oh, it's great. So great. So handbook changes, for the most part, what you're seeing is a lot of deletions, some, and some consistency rewrites here. So for instance, the deletion on page nine, we will replace that with our portrait of a graduate. That will be kind of running the school in our mission and vision. The next piece is about schedule changes and making sure that we add second semester. Second semester language was not included in our schedule changes, so that's what you see on pages 14 and 15. And I will be honest with you, I don't know if that's the old one or the new one, so I will, I'd have to look that up, whether it's the old handbook or whether it's our current one. Same thing with the deletion on page 19, that's not, we will eventually have the student portfolio and here, for the student assessments, that is a work in progress based on what we just did with our portrait of the graduate work, so we felt it wasn't necessary to have that in there until we're ready for, for it to be there. Then we get to the fun part, which is the attendance. It was brought to our attention earlier that there was some confusion with the language, so we did try to go back to read, to have it read consistently, so it'll either say on the fourth, you know, four or more times, or three absences, the policy is this. You have three absence, unexcused absences per quarter. On the fourth unexcused absence, you have the ability to use due restorative hours because it goes to an FA, or, you know, failure due to attendance. We have lots of students who take part in the restorative hours to buy back the day after school, and once that happens, then the grade returns. So for instance, if you have an FA in second term for geometry, if you abide by the policy, the school, the handbook policy for attendance for third term, that everything gets restored. So that is a little bit confusing, and if we can think of an eloquent way to, to put that in there, I would gladly take some revisions and suggestions, but that is what the policy is. So on the, on the fourth day of unexcused is when that kicks in, and it's every term. So once the term starts, yes, everyone refreshes, and it starts at zero again. Everyone seems to like that day.
I have one question.
Yeah, I figured that might be the only question for me.
And for some kids, it's attendance by class or by day, school day? Because every teacher's taking attendance.
Correct, could be both. So teachers take attendance, so you may have a teacher who would notify Mr. Ducharme to say, this is the fourth absence, so they need to have restorative. I would say for the most part, though, it is like an entire day. Because of the rotation in the schedule, you don't have that same first period getting hit over and over and over again, which is honestly a benefit of their schedule.
And is the restorative available if it's not a full day, if it's just in class? So because if they're dismissed, or if they're absent three days, they think they're safe, but then they're dismissed for something or tardy?
Yep.
And it affects that class by one? Is that, is that written?
They can, they would, they, they're on it, the restorative starts at day four. So if you come in on the fourth day of the term and you happen to be tardy or absent or whatever the case may be, and they were unexcused, you could start restorative that day. And then for every time you come in, it, it happens. That's the revolving door, usually around 12:15 in the high school, where the students are coming in and tracking all of that. So then that's tracked by Mr. Ducharme and Ms. Poirier.
And that's new, right? The restorative, is that?
I believe that they've been doing that, and I don't know for how long, but this is, I know that they, this is, was in the handbook before.
So we.
At least last year. So I know it was last year.
Yeah, we've been doing, we changed the central retention to the restorative time.
That's when it was.
That was, was that the last year? Yeah, I think it was, it was last school year.
The name of it, you're.
Yes, because we had to, we had to negotiate that and change the structure of the time and how that was going to run and who was going to run it. It was a.
But it was never, it was never for attendance. It was.
It was used for attendance. It was used in the past. I don't know that it was a formal process like that's laid out here. But it was, I know it was used in the past.
Where does that fall in the schedule, Jason?
It's at the end of the day, it's after school. It's at the end of the day, it's after school.
But is it, is it written in here?
On.
The times for restorative?
If you look at page nine, the page, so it's this back of the first page of the cover page or overview. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Erin, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm answering your question. Where it says page 19, deletion is the top of that page, and if you scroll down to fourth bullet, fifth bullet, and it talks about the changes, key points and changes. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and just so, the overall kind of idea here is to give students a second opportunity to make up.
Absolutely.
Their work and make up that time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they are, and they all know that, what is expected of them and what, at the end of the year especially, at the end of the term especially, but that's all, you've got many opportunities throughout the time to have that instead of just.
So, they go after school.
Instead of losing the credit.
Right, they go after school to make up the time.
Yep.
Why is it in this?
That's what I'm just, I don't see where it's.
In the full handbook? Yes, page 30. Thank you.
Where it says 205 to 305, is that what you're looking for?
We're trying to find the actual language in the handbook for the restorative. So, can I just, I'm just trying to understand it. So, you miss four days.
Correct, unexcused.
Unexcused. On the fifth day, you could choose to go to restorative period to make up immediately for those days.
Yeah, to make up, to make up the fourth day. You would only make up one, you only need to make one.
Okay.
So, you need to maintain at the, at the three.
Okay.
You don't need to go down to zero.
Okay.
You need to stay at three.
So, then you go on, you get whatever grade you earn.
Mm-hmm.
You miss another day, you automatically drop to 50?
You would, you would have another restorative hour.
Okay, and then you could restore.
You got it. Yep.
Then you get to the end of the quarter, you haven't restored yet, whatever's happening, right? Then in the next quarter, you do the right thing, you come to school, you meet the thing, then that also can restore third quarter.
Correct, perfect.
Okay.
I could videotape you. Put you on my, on the website.
I think, and I think it's important to note that if you stay after and do the time, you've got to make up the time, right?
Correct.
That's, the point is, because at some point, your FA is for attendance purposes, so the idea is we'll try to give students the opportunity to make that time back. So, it's not free time, they have to come in and do the work and they stay after school when the school day is done.
And often are working on the work that they missed.
But you can do that at any point.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep. So, yes, so if you, if it's June 1st and you have five absences that happen to have been before April vacation, you could, you would owe the two hours, you could do those on June 1st. There's no, there's no time limit on when you do those, just it has to be that last day of, last day of the term.
So, every student can effectively avoid having the FA?
Absolutely. Yep, all you have to do is show up.
Yep.
And there's lots of reminders, lots of reminders.
So, you could get them in the first quarter and make them up in the third quarter.
No, you would have to follow the attendance policy to get that, and it's, and it's in the quarter rate afterwards. So, whatever it is, it has to be done in that, in that time period. Yep. So, if you have FAs in the first quarter?
Yes.
You would need to follow the attendance policies for the second quarter.
Right.
And if you don't, it stays FA forever?
It will stay FA until we need to average it at the end of the year, which would be a 50 at the, at the height.
Or the lower grade.
Correct.
Or the lower grade.
Or the lower grade, but.
I will say that we did not have that opportunity when we were at school.
Could we possibly add restorative to like that section title? Because we're using that, the word restorative isn't really in this paragraph.
Sure.
They can recover their grade.
Okay.
But if we're calling it restorative, maybe we should just be consistent with calling it restorative. We can add that.
Any other questions with the attendance part of that?
Sorry, I just was, I was going to ask for a little bit of clarity on, I think a question was, it seems like it's strict compared to other districts. I did not personally look at other districts, so I don't know. But part of it was because of the grading we get from the state, is that?
DESI, the DESI report card?
Right.
Is when that, when we got a little bit stricter on it, accountability.
Yes.
And after our recent communication from some parents, I asked Jason, "Is it working?" But unfortunately, there was no attendance, we weren't held to that last year with DESI. So, we, we really don't have anything to compare it to for last year versus this year. But I think for anyone asking, it's important to know that it is because we are held to a higher standard from the state.
Correct.
For our attendance, there are no excused absences with the state. We have excused for medical reasons and whatnot, but it still counts against us to the state. When you go to the DESI website and you look for a school's report card, if you're moving or if you're just, you want to see how you're doing compared to, a lot of people pull up BMR compared to BBT on the state website. That's not our input per se, it's, that's how DESI is presenting us as doing in the state. And attendance is one of the bigger, bigger pieces looked at. This was one of our ways of trying to keep it at bay.
All right, and to that point, Erin, our attendance this year has been incredibly challenging to track, similarly with last year, because we've had to put in place the requirements of having kids stay out, right, for either 10, seven, five days, like that's changed over time. And the Department of Education eliminated the COVID code that was used for kids who were out because of COVID. They got rid of that for the start of this school year. Can't for the life of me figure out why, but, but they just brought it back this week. And.
Oh, they did. Make it retroactive.
And make it retroactive, yes. So, thankfully, we track, we are, we have a very good internal tracking mechanism. So, if, you know, student A was out in sixth grade in, in the middle school from September 15th to the 25th, we noted that already, like we actually kept a spreadsheet.
Thank you, Karen.
On all of that, yep. And that was the only way to figure out who was in, who was out, when they can come back, and now it's when they have to come back, when they can mask, when the mask is off, when this is done, you know. So, but we kept our own mechanism for that, so we were actually able to track that. But what's challenging is the department doesn't. So, if you look at our attendance right now, overall, we're about 25% chronically absent, which is 10% more of the school year out. So, right, 180 days, it's 18 days by the end of the year you've missed of school. Sort of, right, but if we didn't let you come for 10 of those, it's, you really weren't out, I mean, you were out 18, but you really missed eight, right? But we didn't let you come for 10 because you were positive for COVID. So, exactly to your point, like answering that issue of, is this working? We don't know. But we, we hope it's helping the students try to recover some of the attendance challenges, but it's going to, we got to get through this and let this all settle till we can really see whether or not that's working.
I will say the district that I came from, they did not have something like this, and after the, the fifth day, you just lost credit.
Yeah. The only part I want to point out, and this is what I think I was looking for, is where, where does it say? So, I've, I found my way to attendance on page 30 of the actual handbook.
Yep.
And, and there's a section for administrative fifties, but it does not, because on, on the part that we're making the changes to, it says, "Refer to the attendance policy," so, but it does not say, so it says that if you adhere to the attendance policy for the next quarter, your grade is restored, but it does not state in here that the restorative time is an option that I can find. So, I just think it's important that it, that that's also written in our, in our handbook so it, they know that it's.
So, in order, so in order, you want it somewhere to say, in order for the FA to?
Or as an option, because it's saying, because in the past, before the restorative hour was an option for getting your FA, your, your grade back.
Yep.
They had to adhere to the less than three, less than four days in the next quarter, then that FA went to their grade, went to their actual grade. But what you're saying is if they do a restorative hour time for that day, then their grade would come back. I don't, I don't see that this reflects it. Am I missing it?
Oh, you're right, because it does say the following quarter.
It's still written as, as it was about three years ago here, I think.
We will double check.
I just think it needs to be in there as.
As an option.
As an option, restorative hour.
Stated very clearly.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever updated it when we implemented that in the handbook.
So, something of the use of restorative hour in order to remove an FA distinction for a grade.
Yeah, just that option, however you described it, I think, I don't, I think when parents are reading this, they don't realize, so, you know, we did, for a point of reference, we, the committee, did get a parent email.
About a month ago.
About a month ago, around April 29th. And, you know, she was asking about, A, the discrepancy between what is on our website and what is in the handbook, so are we, just hoping we can, once we decide on what's in the handbook, hopefully we can get it updated wherever she found it on the website.
Yep, that's why we're.
On the district website under us.
Right.
That's what it says. So, making sure that that, that matches. But I do think, when I was reading her, and Jill and I had a little mini conversation before this, we get it, families make decisions based on what a family needs in the time, whether it's a financial decision to take a vacation that's not in our April vacation or February, whatever, that's a choice they make. But I think, for me, knowing that you can make up, you know, your family chooses to miss some days to go to Disney, having that option of doing that restorative time seems very fair to me. So, I, that makes me feel better about the parent email. My, I didn't, I didn't, I knew, we hear about restorative, I just didn't know how it actually worked because I didn't have to use it as a parent. So, but thank you for the clarification, Jill.
I will make sure I have that, and then I'll, I'll work on that language for all of you. The other changes are, are, I think, minimal. We are not using ePass on page 37. Senior privileges is just a matter of what time you can come in, if you can come in late in the morning or leave early in the afternoon. The in-house suspension time is just edited. We don't use Saturday school detentions as of now, and just added another bullet under the athletic director responsibility. Those are fairly straightforward.
Any questions for Jill? Comments?
I just want to make a comment. On the request for schedule change, I know that's something that parents get upset about when you can't change the schedule on the fly, and I just want to point out that you and your team run numbers, figure out how many courses of X, Y, and Z, and, you know, if we allow every student to make changes whenever they feel like, then all of the things that you did in planning goes down a hole, and then you have, you know, 28 kids in one class and four kids in another. So, I think, you know, while we would love for everybody to have this free flow thing, it just doesn't work when you're trying to plan schedules and teaching and all of that. So, for parents out there, it's not, we're not trying to, you know, make kids' lives miserable, but there's a lot of planning that goes into what choices they choose the year before, and you kind of have to stick to that so that you don't have those lopsided classes that you suddenly have to cancel because you have two kids in there, so.
This is actually, and this is actually later than a lot of the other districts, it's usually a two-week thing and 10 days and then you're locked in.
Any other comments or questions? I have one. College, excused absences for college, just a thought that maybe our days need to be flip-flopped, where it's maybe three for juniors and two for seniors.
Okay.
I've, I never actually had to go through it with my older kids because colleges weren't allowing tours last year. But this year, I have a junior who's very eager, and it's hard to find the dates, and, and I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with her where she's going to have three in her senior year, but typically by December 1st, all applications are in.
Yep.
Just a.
I think that's fair.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I just, I would, three in the junior year.
I would actually.
And actually juniors aren't even allowed until second quarter, third quarter.
I would just advocate three and three.
Spring semester.
But I think it, it maybe should be three in your junior year, not even restricted to, I think juniors are only two after, in the third, third and fourth quarter. But I think kids are just starting a little earlier now, and just an opinion.
Because my junior has already said that she's got the three unexcused absences we can use too, right now, from college.
If you're ready to do the college tour, that, and that's exciting, and that should be something that, any, anybody, I wouldn't have a, we want you to have that experience.
Yeah, they should be worried about that.
That is what you've been working for.
I need another one now.
Someone.
Good point. All right. Thank you.
And I'm still here.
You are. We're going to segue, if, well, before we do, we will need a vote approving the handbooks with the recommended changes that the committee has brought forward to the principals.
Okay, so, a motion to approve the 2020, the 2022, 2023 student handbooks as presented from our administrators?
It's all moved.
Motion made by Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any other questions, comments?
Just to clarify that Mrs. Fallis will be updating the high school one.
Yeah.
A little bit for a discussion. And I'm going to be in the motion.
As updated? Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. And we're moving on to.
Program of studies. So, Ms. Fallis and her team have been hard at work updating the high schools program of studies for next school year. So, kind of a nice segue from the handbook frankly, because this is the instructional framework, if you will, in terms of course selection and pathways that our students have the opportunity to participate in at BMR. And Ms. Fallis will talk to us a little bit about the changes.
Yes. So, the first thing we would like to do, there was some conversation early on this year with the counseling department and with the technology department about this requirement of a tech credit for graduation. So, the conversation, everyone was, I was actually surprised everyone was in agreement. A lot of students already do engage, and I don't have the numbers and the data offhand to tell you how many kids will engage in a visual arts or a photography type class, but they are very, very popular electives, that we would remove the, the graduation requirement, and instead of having six electives, that would be absorbed into seven elective credits. So, that is the first piece that I believe, because it's a graduation requirement, requires a vote from the school committee.
So, do we want to talk about that before we move forward on the rest of her presentation?
Yeah, I think that's, that's probably the significant shift as it relates to.
Yeah. So, my question would be, is how are we going to keep kids engaged in those, those tech? I know what you're saying, that we're using technology every day, but there are some very specialized courses that I think kids find themselves in, and, and it may not have been something they would have taken as an elective, but they find a passion in it just because of that. So, I feel like the tech credit was more, it wasn't more, it wasn't really the technology piece, it was the exploration of, of it. So, how are we going to keep the kids engaged in those electives that may not have been something they would have journeyed into?
So, one of the ways we're talking about is really putting the emphasis on these pathways that we've been working on and finding out what student interests are earlier. One of the things. One of the things that is going to be on tap for next year is a guidance, counseling curriculum, nine through 12, that will identify some of our student strengths in ninth grade. This is going to piggyback on some of the work, the career work that the middle school has already been doing, and so building on this. And so with those interest strategies and strengths and interest forms that they are going to be engaged in, that will hopefully move kids into the technology piece. I've already had conversations with our technology department about looking at what we already do and offer, and how can we revise some of those to make them 21st century-worthy skills. Had a conversation this afternoon about, you know, what type of marketing can we merge with our graphics? And make that a business, almost like a business pathway. So students who are interested in business or wanting to own their own business, or interested in lawn care, whatever kids would do for a summer job, that might interest them, that would be a pathway that they would engage in, that would help with that. Photography, I would say, is already one of our most popular electives. I looked at the signups, we've got already 80 kids in that, and that's consistent. So some of the visual arts, the video game design, we talked about maybe, they, now that we have the updated technology equipment with, in Mr. Jubas' room, we can upgrade and what we do and the ability for video game design. So there might even be something to build on it and advance that. Additionally, we have our Project Lead the Way in our engineering, and that's considered technology. And we're building on that pathway intentionally with Principles of Engineering. And the third option of our course is wide open, we can do really anything. But our environmental sustainability would be, would fall under a tech credit as well, because it falls under the engineering with Project Lead the Way. So I really think that there's a lot of ways to come at that, depending on what you're interested in.
And the current staff we have would be up to speed with creating that curriculum and moving the pathways.
Yep, we've, we actually, we had that discussion, and that will be on our school improvement plan for the fall, to, to look at the revising and working on that and looking at, even within our, the existing, I'd say, four teachers with tech, including their computer science, of allowing us to add a course like cybersecurity and Principles of Computer Science, that will help move us into the AP credit as well.
Any other questions about removing the tech credit?
I, I just, I'll just say my fear. My fear is that if it's not a requirement, and then kids kind of divert elsewhere, again, we're in a small high school, that then we don't have enough to maintain the staff that we have there. And, you know, between that and the arts, that's my worry. When you, when you don't make it a requirement, and I don't want to have to be here in a year or two saying, well, this teacher only has, you know, the signups for three courses. He or she has to go to a .6 or something, which, you know, then you're, you're trying to defend, keep, you know what I mean? So I, I, I don't know. That's my fear.
I will say another, a part of that, I don't want to say argument, but one of the things that, the conversation that centered around this would be to also allow some of our students who are, will go are high flyers, to be able to take some of those more academically challenging courses. Not that that's always recommended, because when I see students come in at me and have five AP classes or AP honors combined, I worry about all the other things of the mental health pieces. But that was also part of the, the question around that.
Thank you. Oh, sure, I got three layers.
Does this make it a requirement for seven electives? Or it's?
You would, you, so we would absorb that, yes. There would be, and so it would be a general, it would be seven electives instead of having the technology. So right now it reads six credits, six elective credits and one technology credit. It would read seven elective credits.
Because you're still getting a 24.
But.
Correct.
If they didn't take seven electives and took an extra science class, that.
The science class would be considered an elective.
It would be the elective over the three.
Correct. Yep. So once you've met your three-year requirement, any other additional sciences, even if you took five?
They're all.
All elective. Correct.
Just making sure.
I'm taking.
Any other questions?
The incoming freshman class, though, they all chose a technology credit when they did their scheduling, right?
They could have, yes, they could have taken that as their, depending on what their pathway was.
Did you say freshman?
Incoming freshman.
Incoming freshman, so they had to.
Class of 2026. Eighth graders, yeah. I remember going through all of this with my eighth grader a couple weeks ago.
2026, yeah. And we were encouraging things like the Project Lead the Way to start getting that exposure in early.
So I guess to Carrie's point, so all of those students have picked.
They picked a technology credit.
Now we're saying it's not a requirement. Will we give them a little leeway to then take something else for fun? You know, because you're going to have that issue, because they're all signed up for these. Now it's not a requirement, so if they want to take something else.
Well, it, it's not, it's not a targeted requirement. It still would be an elective requirement. They still have to take seven credits in an elective. And in, and as far as freshmen are concerned, the first year, ninth grade is pretty well-scripted with what you have. I mean, you're in band and you're in PE, you're Spanish, like what else do you have? If you don't have the band component, the music component, then you've got only a few options. Not a lot of students are going to have options of having an elective, that's usually a junior, senior elective as well. So, and that's also the exploratory piece that we welcome with the ninth grade.
So like, moving forward, the numbers in like media arts this coming school year won't necessarily reflect what those numbers might be two to three years from now, because the eighth grade class, that was one of like the popular choices to select.
So it's, it's great that the enrollment is looking good, but they were told they had to take it.
They had to take the technology, yes.
All right, so I'll be looking for a motion to remove the technology credit graduation requirement, moving to seven electives for our high school graduates.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Tara. And is there a second?
A second.
Second by Dan. Is there any further discussion or concerns or questions?
If I may just, the, the likelihood of that requirement still being met through ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade is still tremendously high.
Yeah. As long as, as like Tammy just said, next year we're not sitting here saying, oh, you know, we just haven't had, had, have enough kids sign up for music tech. Because that is probably a smaller group of kids and, you know, that, so we don't want that coming back to us versus, you know, making sure that the kids are still filling the electives.
That would, what that would look like then would be a list of option, elective options that would be open to ninth-grade students. So instead of having it in necessarily in departments, it would, it could look a little differently when we're presenting with the eighth grade here.
But we don't want to be talking about going from full-time teachers to .5s or 6s.
And that is not my intention at all, definitely.
Nor a class with five people.
That, and that, and that is also, that is also what we're looking at.
But that does happen. That happens with our APs too. It does.
I know.
We, we are aware of that. But keeping those options there for the kids is still worth it. Questions? Okay, so I'm looking for, the motion is on the table. We'll be looking for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. The other pieces are more of restructuring, revision. In our, in our ELA program, the teachers came early on, and these, the next changes are, were all, including the first one, were all grassroots. This was not me saying you need to do this, which was great. They came and said, look, we, we have a number of things that are happening when the juniors and the seniors are together for their junior and senior elective. One of them is the real thing called senioritis. And that was, that has been a piece. And they were really at, looking at also being able to look at the way juniors would be looking at school, college as being one of them, and versus the seniors, the idea of choice for seniors. Particularly where seniors would be in, in a half-year course, having options that is a half-year course rather than a full-year course, senior year, would, would give them, if they weren't very successful in the first semester, they could hopefully do some credit recovery also in the second semester with that. So the change was to go to a full-year, junior-year American literature class, and then bring the senior year to allow our electives that were full-year to then be scaled down to half-year, to again allow more exposure, have that college experience where you're going to have, be taking semester-type courses, particularly in, in English. So that was the, the change. And we're also introducing, we're tweaking the curriculum for the media criticism, adding that with, with journalism, but looking at it more of a broader and on a critical thinking level, and adding the British literature to that, which, to be honest, my surprise, the numbers are quite good for that level. And also having a level for college prep and honors for all of those courses. And the second piece is a, really a revamp of the science as we know it. Looking at, in particularly in the first term, the number of students who were struggling in chemistry was a bit overwhelming. And the question came with the correlation of the Algebra II, because Algebra II is often recommended to be paired with your chemistry class. So with that, the science department presented different pathways, also bringing in the PLTW biomedical pathway. So the big shift is looking at having environmental science as a foundational course during the majority of the student's freshman year, followed by biology in the sophomore year, which is the MCAS. The MCAS just recently got rid of a physics option. So it is just the biology MCAS, so that will be in sophomore year. There is an honors piece to this for some of our eighth graders who are also going to be in advanced math, and that would be the honors biology section, followed by chemistry, and then any lab science. For those students who are non-science people, then you might join, you might go with the environmental science or biomedical science, followed by biology. And then you could have the option of chemistry, but you don't have to have the option of chemistry, because all of our sciences that we offer are lab sciences. And the only requirement by the state is three years of a lab science. So a full year of forensics with a environmental sci, environmental sustainability would be something that would qualify for that third year for those people who are not science-friendly. But I'm getting better at it. I'm spending a lot of time in chemistry classes. So those are, those are the big, the big changes to what we're seeing that will, so we will have a bubble year next year. There will be more environmental science classes. The teachers are aware of that, based on where, some, so some freshmen, current freshmen who have taken the biology, who may not be ready for that chemistry, who would like to take the environmental science as well as the incoming ninth grade.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Sorry. Can you just clarify, what year of high school does MCAS science, when is it taken now?
Right now, currently?
Or next year, I guess?
So currently, right now, our class of 2025, our freshmen, will take biology on June 6th and 7th this year. We will have a small cohort of freshmen who will take it next year. The rest of the class of 2026 will take it in their sophomore year. Did I confuse you even more?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm wondering why we're moving biology forward after it seems like they're taking the test.
No, they won't.
No, we're, we're moving, so we're moving the year. So instead of having the biology in as a, as a freshman year, whenever you take biology, regardless of the grade, is when you take the test. So let me be clear. So if you were, if you were a freshman, Tammy?
Standard.
Nope. If you were a freshman and you were a ninth grade in, in our honors biology, you will take the MCAS as a ninth grader. If you don't take biology until you're a 10th grader, then you will take biology as a 10th grader.
That's why there's like.
That's very different from Rhode Island.
Yeah, you will not, you will not be waiting, you will not be waiting two years to take, to take the MCAS.
Well, I was thinking, if you're taking at the beginning of sophomore year and you're just taking biology, like, we're not really playing the,
No.
You know, go-to-the-test-type thing, and when we do that, okay. All right, sorry, that's just very different than what I'm used to.
And the rationale for moving that is the pandemic?
And definitely skills-based and a lot of to do with the math. The math and chemistry is heavy, heavy mathematics. And students who are struggling a lot, we did a lot of work with our chemistry teachers and our math teachers looking at this component to be successful. We also were looking at how do we expose our, both are, so twofold. Expose our high flyers to more science, because you would have that biology and chemistry requirement done by your sophomore year. You would still have another lab science, but there's a lot of other science electives that you could take, particularly if you're interested in that medical field for our students. But also having a pathway for our students who would not be going to either college for science and not are science-minded, to be able to follow a pathway that included more appropriately-placed sciences as well as exposure to more, I would say, some of those interesting electives. So it really was both looking at all students and not benefiting just one.
I've got a question.
Please.
What year do, do most of the students take the Algebra II? Is it sophomore year?
Junior year.
So they don't take Algebra II till junior year?
Correct. So for, for the majority of our students, particularly our CP kids, our college prep kids, you would take Algebra I as freshmen, you would take geometry as a sophomore, and you would take Algebra II as a junior. And that would marry with the chemistry junior year. Again, for our high flyers, for our, for our students who are, are honor students, many of them will take Algebra II freshman, I mean, freshman year because they have taken Algebra I here as eighth graders. And then say, that's the same thing for our academy. They'll take the Algebra I, they'll have already taken Algebra I, Algebra II. They'll be taking geometry, so they will already have that math foundation to be able to take chemistry as a sophomore.
So it's just aligning chemistry with when they take Algebra II?
Any other questions about the?
On the ELA piece?
Yes.
Is this saying that our current junior class for next year's seniors will not be eligible to take AP Lit or AP Lang?
Absolutely. You can take AP Lit at any time. But you also have options to take half-year electives for that, that course. But yep, AP Lang, AP Lang and AP.
To do the full year.
Yep, AP Lang and AP Lit are both open to juniors and seniors. That is the one exception. Correct.
So were juniors allowed to take these classes listed as seniors, right, as a junior?
No, they'll take, they'll take either AP Lang, Lit, or 11th grade.
So what is the change here?
Removing not, removing 12th graders from American Lit.
What about AP? I know she just said.
AP is, AP is the asterisk. They can take that junior and senior year. Correct. So during the APs, you will have mixed, you will have mixed 11th grade and 12th grade. That's just to allow everybody to be able to take that.
Have any of the current juniors already selected American Lit for their senior year?
No.
So then they'll never have American Lit?
No, they will, they, if they would have had that this year, the rising seniors, if they would have taken the American Lit as part of the options, they would have had that, yes.
But if they took AP, if they took Lang, they could not take Lit this year?
You mean AP? If they took AP Lang this year, they could take AP Lit next year. If it has the AP in front of it, that's open to any juniors or seniors. They're looking at the honors, American Lit and the CP, American Lit, to be the junior year curriculum.
So if a junior didn't take American Lit this year?
And took, instead of dystopian?
What did they take? That was.
They could have taken dystopian, they could have taken cultural perspectives.
So those are going to be pushed off to senior year?
Correct.
Seniors. Okay.
Correct.
So the idea is that those courses are your senior year options? In addition to, if you want to do one of the AP courses, you can as well.
Yep, absolutely.
But junior year, you would not be taking dystopian.
Correct.
You mentioned the cultural.
Cultural perspectives, you, British Lit, the media criticism.
But seniors can decide to opt out of those if they want and take one of the AP courses. If they did AP Lang, their junior year, then maybe they would do AP Lit.
Correct. And they could also take another, an elective as well if they're, if they're heading out to be English majors.
Did you get any feedback from the students themselves, the juniors, that were indicative of them saying that having the seniors in their classroom was distracting?
That is a great question, and I don't know the answer to that because this was a proposal that was brought to me by the, the teachers.
I was just wondering how the students felt.
I haven't, when we did scheduling, I haven't heard any of that, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean that there were.
I'm just wondering if this is a ripple effect from, and this is not you. And this was a tough conversation when we did it. When we went away from exams and went into the authentic assessments, I'm, I'm wondering if, if that's where we lost our seniors in being able to focus in a classroom with juniors, you know, in that, in that, I don't want to say extended school year, but.
I don't know. I mean, I, I.
Senioritis.
Senioritis has been around for a while.
It's been around as long as I've been teaching at the high school.
We've got juniors that have it.
You're right.
No, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I'm just not sure that.
I will say that that is not something that, the standard, old-fashioned, this is when senior, or this is when exams are going to take place, has gone away. The, the idea of having a, an exam is definitely a teacher option. That is not something, one of the things that we're talking about is just because we're moving towards this authentic assessment and critical thinking, doesn't mean that we don't have a responsibility to teach our students and be prepared for certain types of standardized testing. If, if students are not exposed to multiple-choice questions, they're not going to be prepared for the MCAS. That's just how it is. So it is our responsibility to be able to fold and marry all, all types of assessments to be able to do that. That's why you would see multiple-choice tests in AP classes because that is part of that, that requirement. So there's not, that's not something that is removed by any stretch. It's something that is meant to enhance and to really look at our critical thinking.
Erin, can I just add a piece of that? Because I think it's important to mention that the way you articulated that was perfect because the idea was that with the critical thinking type of assessments, those authentic assessments, it was never to completely remove some of the test prep stuff that the kids just have to do and get good at. The idea was that we just shouldn't live there. Like, we don't want the students just thinking at that level in bubble sheets and filling in, you know, the blue books. We actually want them to be able to think critically beyond that.
I think one of the interesting things, and I'll be, I'm going to be curious to hear what the class of 2022 has to say when they come back after, you know, in December. And I would like to invite them back to have a panel to meet with our current classes, and that's going to be part of that curriculum that I was talking about, to see what it was and particularly about those assessments that was helpful. I think I was surprised, and college was a long time ago, but that there was that group collaborative piece. And the feedback from our students, and I did have a student, student focus group, said that they do feel that they are stronger critical thinkers. They would like to focus on the communication and collaboration piece, especially with COVID.
They also told us that we're, they, we are teaching too much skill and not enough content. Like, so we're very focused on, you know, inferencing and main ideas and supporting details and, and not enough about the story and the context and the time and the history and the, which I thought was really, really interesting.
But we're working hard.
I think I would like to see what this year's enrollment was. Junior versus senior on the, the American Lit side versus these other classes that are listed. The only thing that comes to mind for me is if there was a student that didn't feel that this was the year they could dive into American Lit, but went for one of the other choices, who are we to say, no, you, you can't take American Lit as a senior? To me, someone just might not be ready to dive into that. I, I don't know. And, and what we're saying is you're going to take it, but we're only going to let you take it at this point. Are there other classes that we do that with in the curriculum?
Where we would say?
I don't know that we're saying that, though. You can take it either junior or senior year. The AP, the AP courses?
No, the American Lit.
American Lit.
Sorry. I thought you were referring to the AP.
So you're, so hypothetically, if somebody took this year as a junior, took dystopian for the whole year and really would like to jump into this American Lit and does not mind being in with juniors, I would probably waive that.
But you're saying it's the teachers that said they didn't really want that mix?
Right. But you're electing, there's a difference between having just a kettle of fish in one versus somebody saying, I'm very intentionally would like this curriculum and I want to be in there.
Yeah. I mean, I think the other scenario is as a junior, you know, that's the year that you're going to be applying to colleges. You might want that AP Lit or Lang. And then senior year, you're going to be doing potentially an internship or whatever. You don't want that AP class because it's very limiting on how much you can miss. So then you take American Lit figuring, you know, I've seen Romeo and Juliet on TV 42 times, so this should be in English, English.
Correct curriculum.
So I, I guess, I, I love half-year class, classes for English because, and I, gosh, I hate to highlight this part, but when a student doesn't do well, it then allows them to double up that second semester and still graduate on time. So I'm a huge fan of that. Colleges are okay with all these, like, little, I call them the boutique English. That's what I call them.
Yes, they, they all, they all match, they all match in our competency determination.
Okay. And will there be final projects or choices of exam and do those half-credits as well? Or are there now? I don't, I'm not sure.
Oh, yes, there are. And, and every, every course that's on there would be, have the authentic assessment. This will allow them to, to kind of pick and choose in what's happening. And you would also have the ability to, to have dystopian offered both in the fall and the spring. So it's going to actually offer some flexibility with our senior schedule, hopefully, particularly with some of those Singleton classes that are really hard to, hard to schedule. So to try to have that master schedule would be. You know, you may have a schedule and you may not really want to be in dystopian, but it fits perfectly and it, and it hits that, it checks that box. Because that's really the three, you have to pass a, a English, a math, and a physical education for your senior year. Anything else?
Any other comments or questions on the changes to science or ELA?
I just, I think I understand and agree with the science one because chemistry can be difficult, especially if you're not understanding the math behind it. It's a lot of different, I call it like a baking in chemistry, like different measurements and stuff.
Formulas, lots of it.
So that I agree with, but I'm kind of on the fence with Erin in the fact that I'm not sure about the junior year, removing that American Lit from seniors, unless they wanted to try and waive it. But I do like the two, the two half-years to give them an option, to expose them to diff, to more than just one type of literature or ELA for a whole year.
I will say, based on the numbers, we actually have enough right now to possibly run two sections of AP Lit. And that's for different from, we have more students who have signed up for AP next year than we did this year. So that's also a, a bonus. I can't say if that has anything to do with what we did with realigning pieces. We still have numbers and we have lots of numbers to run all of the other, the other courses. So.
Will all of the classes listed under the senior be available both semesters?
I'm looking at the signups right now. Dystopian will be, cultural perspectives will be. Right now, media criticism is at 10, so that would be one semester of that. But there's an, oh, I'm sorry, that's not right. There's 25 for an honors and a CP. So I'm not sure when we run the actual schedule, whether we, a lot of times when we run our, some of the English courses, you can run the honors and CP within the same class, within the confines of the same class. I'm not sure whether they will run them separately as separate, this is an honors and this is a CP, or whether they'll be able to join them together. And if they are able to join them together, they would have that option. We just haven't gotten to that part of it yet. We put it in the computer and press go.
All right. So do we want to take ELA separate from science or altogether? So let's talk about ELA first. If we put a motion on the floor, then we can maybe talk a little more.
Make a motion to consider the ELA junior and senior year requirements.
Okay. So Tara's making a motion to consider the ELA junior and senior requirements as presented to us.
Second.
And second by Kerry. So if, if we were to approve this, it looks like we would be approving, junior year would consist of American literature or AP Lit or AP Lang. But to be clear, they cannot take both APs the same year as a junior.
That would not be recommended at all for their mental.
And they would not have, juniors would not have access to the senior-listed classes here, which are, would be broken into half-year, ELA, full credits. And that's the introduction of British literature, media criticism, dystopian literature and cultural perspectives. Those would only be available to our seniors.
Correct.
But hopefully run in both semesters to fit into schedules. Any other questions or comments before we take a vote on opinions on? I feel like it's a little bit restrictive to our juniors, but I, as long as you're telling me they still have the AP option for any time, they can't take it before junior year. So it would have to be AP Lit or Lang, junior, senior. Any other thoughts or opinions on that?
Well, to Tammy's point, if they, most of them, I shouldn't say most, a great majority of them are looking at colleges in junior year. So to have that AP class in junior year would do wonders for them on the application part. So it might be not necessarily restricting them, but kind of guiding them in that direction.
I would say a lot of our students who do take the AP Lit, take the AP Lang. It's kind of, it's kind of a two-for-one.
I heard you say was that if you had a, not in these exact words, but, but if you had a, if you had a cohort of students in their senior year that wanted to take American literature, you could run a cohort, you could run a section of them. Right?
I would, that I'm not going to deny a student if they're really, especially if the student is coming saying, I really, really want this. I want to do this, knowing that it's going to be a heavy junior course.
I just want to say too, I'm, I'm okay with those half-credit, half-credit English courses not being open to juniors because if they, again, sorry, if they, if they take one and, and are not successful, and then the next year, your program of studies changes, then they have to take a full credit of English because you've, in some, and, and, you know what I mean? So potentially you don't have that half-credit to make up, and then they have to take a whole credit.
Well, they're getting a whole credit for the half a year, correct?
No, they have to take two half-years. Two halfs equal one whole.
When we ran semesters last year, they got a full credit after one semester.
The second sentence says.
But that's, the time on learning was different.
It was a, it was a.
So these are only .5?
These are .5 classes. Yeah. Their time on learning.
I mean, why would a junior want to do that to themselves?
Well, they would take two to make one.
But I think the model here is to, you, you do, you like, you do your kind of your heavy lifting, right? Like your junior year, your freshman, sophomore, junior year. And then if you're not going to take one of the AP courses or a dual enrollment course, you can take these, you know, electives that are semester courses.
And to give more variety and more exposure to what you'll take.
Horror stories and crime and punishment.
So how's a senior going to get the four credits if they take a half-year and then do an internship for the second half?
So they would, it's similar with what they're having, the internship has that you, if you're successful with the third quarter term, that quarter doubles.
Okay. So it's just that third quarter.
It's the same, yep, it's the same.
The same.
Do they make out in the deal?
We're hoping to grow that too, that internship piece.
That sounds a little risky.
And the QCC dual enrollment is weighted the same as a.
So now you're going to throw another, I was, I was trying not to say anything, Dr. DeFalcio. I was waiting for this. All right. You're ready for the caveat?
Let's clean it all up.
Should you take a QCC course as a senior? That actually is, would be considered a full-year course, even though it is only a semester. This is why I'm not bringing this up because y'all might keep me here to.
Don't worry, we're talking about this after these questions.
So that would just, that's the only caveat, just because that's what the QCCP says and what everybody else, what other districts are doing as well.
But guidance or whoever, like, the kids will have guidance to explain these credits to them.
Oh, yeah. They need every, every single year, every single year when we do that and the same, the same year. Yep. There's actually, when you start, they have a four-year plan. So you've got the four-year plan, even as your, your incoming ninth grader will have a, will have a four-year plan to allow you to see it, which is why we have those pathways.
All right. So the motion is to consider the ELA junior and senior year requirements as presented. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of changing our ELA junior and senior year requirements for ELA, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? After all of that discussion, it's unanimous.
It's what's in the best interest.
Erin abstained.
Very abstained.
Sorry.
She doesn't want her kid to be able to say, Mom, what'd you do to me?
No, I just, I still, I'm undecided.
All right. So now I will need a motion for the science sequencing revamp. Then we can talk about it a little more.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Tammy.
Second.
Second by Dan, and that is to consider the sequence of our science classes being rolled out as recommended by the teaching staff, which I think Jill explained pretty well, that we need to be a little more in line with our math curriculum. And we will be moving the, the MCAS year to 10th grade versus.
When you take the biology, you will take the MCAS.
But they do have to take it by 10, end of 10th grade.
The first time, the first time you do that, unless you've come into the district from out of state, which we've had a number of them, surprise, you get to take biology.
Any other questions or comments about the science?
I just have a question on the pathways. For a student who says ninth grade honors biology, 10th grade honors chemistry, can they pull in one of those biomedical pathways at any point? So they don't, you don't necessarily start on that path.
Correct. You can take the biomedical, you can, and you don't even need to do all four of the biomedical. No, you do not. So if you only have, if you, so for instance, some of our seniors have only gotten through two of the biomedical, we're only in year two, so that's where they started. If you start the biomedical pathway as a junior for the first time, you could take the, the years one and two. There's no rhyme or reason. The part of that, which is the advantage of starting as a freshman would be that you would be able to have all four of them.
But this is the core sequence. That's what's in here.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Looking for anyone that wants to approve that, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that is unanimous. So that is unanimous. I have a question for you about the dual enrollment. I was just curious for an update on what we look like for next year, anyone taking advantage of that? How is it going to work? Like you were just going to say the one credit.
We have two students who will actually be going full-time for their senior year at QCC. So they will be full dual enrollment. Right now our offerings are not enough to hit the 10-person mark for QCC to have, and have run our own class. Right now I'm waiting to hear back, I actually, we were in conversation yesterday with the QCC to see what of the options that the students are interested in, for example, psychology, but we do offer that at the high school. There's a political science course that some are interested in, and there is one math course that if those are either in, after the school day, or might be asynchronous or something like that to allow those students to have that. Additionally, we have reached out to look at CCRI and as most recently as today to Bridgewater, because Bridgewater has a similar program, but they have online options for students. So we are exploring this to see what will benefit particularly our schedule, because our schedule does rotate. So having those traditional Tuesday, Thursday from 10 to 11:15 classes that you would find in college is a little challenging when your F block is always moving. So we are still going to, we're not giving up on this, we're going to keep working to find what is working. But for two of our seniors, they will graduate next June with one year of their associates under their belt. And still be able to participate in all of the benefits of being a senior at.
And all of those credits, it's one for one for us. So they will, they'll have additional credits.
So for, so for instance, they need to take a PE for senior year because that's what the state requires, and that is not a requirement for QCC. So that's one of those side arrangements that needs to be a little caveat for them. But both of them are on set, all set and ready to go and signed their contracts and enrolled in QCC. So I'm pretty excited to hear what their experience are for that.
So could we change, when, do kids, this is, so when do students take PE in our district? Is it all four years?
Correct. And that's based on, that's based on the state.
That just started last year.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't think that's how my kids did it.
Next year's seniors will have, and with three full credits. So I think we're still going to continue that conversation.
Yes, yeah.
I think we need to change our policy to grandfather the incoming seniors. They can take it as an elective, but I think they already have, they're at 2.5 now. And if it's blocking up their schedule and they can't take these other opportunities.
The challenge is the state requires it all four years, but the opportunities might be to look at a waiver and have other requirements fulfill that or other opportunities like athletics or.
And there are, and there are, there are.
There's got to be something that we can think of.
So would we look at that waiver for all four years or just for this class that's affected by the change?
Oh, no, I think, I think, well, it would be up to the committee, but I think we could look at the waiver for seniors, like moving forward, not just for this particular senior class.
And that will be, so the juniors will then have 2.5 credits of PE because of the way that that was, that changed from a full year.
So they've met the requirement already?
They've met the requirements in the handbook, but not the state requirements.
That's where we would need that waiver. That's where we would need to say, if you were to, if we would accept that, you know, in athletics, you play, you know, three seasons of sports, which we want to encourage, I don't know, senior year might be a little late to do that, but you know, but you could do that, you could do, again, a gym.
We can look at the, we can look at the.
And see what's allowed for waivers.
Especially if you've got more seniors coming down the line that will participate in the QCC opportunity, it'll be difficult for them to do the PE.
I think we should definitely look into that.
You can look at a policy subcommittee meeting for that?
So sorry to keep you so long on your birthday.
That's okay, I think I'm up for athletic, the athletic waiver too, or the athletic fee, so I'm just going to kind of hang out with you. I'm very comfortable in the chair.
We're going to jump to that for.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
So the short version here, and we went back at length and looked at minutes, rewatched the meeting. Essentially, when we made the, when the school committee made the decision to reduce the fees, it was for, and it was, and Jane was very clear and repeating, you know, what the motion was, it was for the year, essentially. So the default after the school year ends would be to go back to the old fee schedule. So it was why we had put it on as a discussion item, because I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of that. So right now the fees were reduced by 50% and the family cap was at 400. And essentially what would happen at the end of the school year is that the fees would go back to what they were. We're not recommending an increase, just to go back to where they were.
Pre-pandemic.
Pre-pandemic, which was a $600 family cap.
$200 for each sport with the exception of football, which is 325.
And band is 150?
Yes, and the music fees would go back to what they were pre-pandemic as well. So we just wanted to make that as a discussion item for tonight. See if there's any conversation around that, just so folks knew.
I think we need to financially move in that direction again, just to maintain what we had in budget discussions a few months ago with uniforms and, you know, the upkeep on our end. We've kind of putted that for the last two years without that revenue. So it, the expense didn't go away, we just found a way to make it a little easier for the parents. But like Jason said, the motion that we made last year covered this school year. So without change, without making another motion, it will fall back to what it was as before.
Yeah, there's nothing to.
And I don't think we're in any position to raise those to our families. I think just going, you know, letting it fall back to what we've charged in the past will cover us for now.
Do we have any insight, if we went back to the previous fees, what, for each sport or music, what that income would look like, like company?
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking, like you said, your uniform's an upkeep like that, but I'm thinking that the instruments that need to get replaced or repaired or, that's what that money would go towards? Is that, is that what the parents' fee would go towards?
It goes to various items, it goes into, essentially, for athletics, it goes into, Matt can speak to this, but an athletic revolving account, and similarly with music.
Yeah, the cost to the district is significantly more than is collected from the fees. So it goes towards, it goes towards offsetting the cost of, for athletics, like the coaches and the equipment and the scheduling, the transportation.
Or the stipends for the directors for music.
For music, yeah, exactly.
All right, any other questions about user fees? We don't need a motion, so we'll, we appreciate that update.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Hope you're celebrating on the weekend.
I have lemon meringue pie waiting for me.
Birthday weekend.
And the students were lovely to me, and the staff was lovely.
It was a great day.
Yes, it's just to go back out to families.
So also to, because prior to jumping in, but this is very specific, so the loss of that revenue when we went to half between the two athletics and music is probably between $40,000 and $50,000.
And Tammy was asking a great question, which was where does, where did that language live? Like, how did we get that information out to families? So we had, when the school committee made that decision, we had just sent out a communication to families. So what we will do is just notify families that effective, you know, next fiscal year, when we start to register for programming for next school year, all the fee schedule will just go back to what it was. And we'll remember to include the information so they know what that is, because it's been a couple of years, we had reduced the fees because of COVID and the impacts of schedules and band concerts and games and all of that. So we'll take care of that. But the specific language was in the meeting of the, I think it was August 5th of 2021 where the, it was approved in the, the actual language itself, if anyone wanted to hear it or see it.
So I'm sorry, Matt, you said between $40,000 and $50,000, is that per year or is that total? Because you did the reduced.
For two years.
No, that's one, no, I'm saying for each year, when we cut this, when we cut the cost in half, the total loss in revenue for that, for that year would be between $40,000 and $50,000.
Is there an, is there a chance that buses are going to cost a lot more next year with the price of fuel and all that right now? I mean, I know we're setting our prices right now for athletic fees, but I'm thinking about these teams traveling and if the buses come back to us with a significantly higher rate.
So what we, yes, so what we could see is, the bus, the bus contract was just, was approved earlier this year, so we have a contract and all of the costs are in alignment with what we budgeted for, for next year. The caveat to that is there is a fuel escalation clause, so we may see additional, we may see additional costs from that. That remains to be seen right now because it has to be done on like a almost monthly basis to analyze the difference between what we pegged the cost of fuel at and any kind of area.
But we still had a cap on that too, wasn't, yeah.
You never know, price of fuel might go down.
And actually, actually, there's, that's part of the, it's called the fuel escalation clause, but if the cost decreases, then there's a, there's a discount for the fuel as well.
You can only hope.
Back to $1.99.
Listen, when we were in COVID, early days, I was driving in and it was 89 cents a gallon. It was fabulous.
You were the only one on the road.
Because there was no demand.
Right, it was nice, yeah. I get to work in 10 minutes from Newport.
Driving 162 miles an hour.
Nobody else out there. And then the two other items, the first, if we could look at the Chromebook purchase, essentially, the big kind of headline here is the Chromebooks that our senior class is currently using are incredibly old. I think they are, you're right, I think they're six years old. We had looked into this with the tech, tech team yesterday.
We refer to them as junk.
They are very, yeah, but.
They're just old.
We want to give the students an opportunity, if they want them, they could buy them for $25. And so we, and honestly, in our, in our technology meeting this week, we were having this discussion that, and Erin, I think again, we had talked about this, the students are almost doing us a favor by buying them if they wanted them because they really don't have any value at this point and we would need to, we would need to dispose of them.
I was going to say the recycling costs of some of the technology equipment is sometimes greater than just the, like if we let them get purchased or disposed.
So do we really need to charge them $25?
I think there's.
There's some out.
They're still working.
There is, yeah, they still work.
Are we taking GoGuardian off for them?
We'll make sure they.
They are pretty locked up.
Oh, we're going to keep watching them.
That's the idea.
Parents pay $10 extra to keep GoGuardian on.
If I may, just, I can remember the debate when you guys were getting these Chromebooks, I don't know, on my position back then, and it's, you should charge something before you get criticized for giving them away after what you went through to get them.
But they've gotten a lot of use. This is our first middle school class that was handed a one-on-one device and they're graduating now. So they carried it well.
Well, do you have enough to give one to every senior? I guess would be the question.
They have them.
Yeah, it's the one they've been using.
Do you have enough to give to one to every senior next year?
Oh, we have.
Every student has.
We're full one-to-one.
The cycle is that we are buying new ones anyway.
Well, so that is accurate, but so I will say, that is something that we will need to pay attention to moving forward past probably 24. So when we get into budgeting for 25, we do want to start looking at re-upping leases for Chromebooks in accordance with the cycle that was outlined, because what has happened in the last couple of years is the, the state has released a federal fund, the state has released, there have been grants for devices and we've been accessing that money and we've been purchasing a significant amount of devices that, the ones that we need, obviously we're not stockpiling them, but we will have enough to last us. But as they get older and the ones that are currently new, when we go into 24 and into 25, we're going to need to start, it'll be for at least probably four years, you'll see one lease pick up a bunch of Chromebooks, and then the next year there'll need to be two leases and then so on and so forth, eventually having.
We're currently still purchasing.
We're still purchasing and that is still through grant money. And right now we have, like, as you know from the budget meetings, there are no leases right now moving into FY '23.
Yep, everything was paid.
It was all paid off.
That was like the three-year cycle of leases.
Yeah, we actually ended up buying all those out, paying all those off and. Paid them all out.
So is it my understanding then that a middle school student gets their Chromebook and that Chromebook stays with that student all the way through senior year?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know if you guys took them back for the summer and if you fragged them or whatever, cleaned them up, gave them back.
They are responsible for them and the charger.
And they're all, you know, I mean, you work remote and know how all this works, so they do everything like with a push of a button, they clean everything up and they update all the software and they do it all remotely.
Beauty of the Chromebook.
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable, actually. So we're looking for a motion to allow the students, the seniors to purchase, if they want.
At the $25, does anyone want to?
If I may, so I'm going to just play the senior that may have lost the Chromebook and the charger. And so I'll be happy to buy it instead of paying the 25, instead of paying $30 to pay for the charger and the Chromebook.
It's a different number. It's 35.
Yeah, so.
That's considering that they, they just lost one or, you know, or the other.
It's cheaper to buy it, so.
I think we'd give them a discount if they lost both.
Even if they lost it.
Right, if you completely lost it, it's considered purchased when you give us the $25.
So we're looking for a motion for the Chromebook purchase.
So moved.
Available to our seniors. Motion made by Dan and second by Tammy. Any other discussion?
We want to open this up to the district if there are leftovers somehow, you know, after seniors all.
But if they don't want them.
Like any of that comeback.
Expense to us.
There was a discussion that it might be helpful to have, even if, you know, 50% of them were purchased or 30% were purchased, to have some, the tech team kind of tinkers with them and, yeah, we'll kind, you know, if yours is out to get a new screen, they can give you one of these, it's not great, but it will work for a couple of weeks kind of thing.
The keypad, the keypad might be able to be replaced or any different piece.
Okay, so the motion as written is to allow just the seniors to purchase them for And then there's fee schedule for missing pieces. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. And then the last item in my report is for summer programming, and to talk specifically about the pay rate. I know at our last meeting, I was able to provide the committee with an update about the extensive level of programming we have in place. As was the case last year, we are in pretty heavy competition with districts around us to hire summer, summer teachers and for, whether it's enrichment or whether it is traditional summer school or any of the mental health supports that we have in place for our students over the summer with our adjustment guidance counselors. And so to make sure that we can staff appropriately, we are asking the committee to authorize for this summer only, a increase from the 35 an hour to the 45 an hour for our summer programming staff, specifically our Unit A staff.
Looking for a motion to approve the hourly Unit A pay rate from $35 to $45, one-time adjustment for summer of 2022, and it will revert back to the contractual agreed-upon rate of $35 for 2223. to the contractual agreed-upon rate of thirty-five dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. So moved. Okay, motion made by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any questions or discussion?
Do you know the head count?
For the staff?
Yeah.
We actually are not there yet. We have a meeting Tuesday and, and it's one of those things that's based on enrollment. And so, and the enrollment on it is a little tricky only because you have some students that have to have credit recovery opportunities. And then you have all the enrichment, like, opportunities that we'll be offering. So there's, there's that piece of it, but then there's also the Twenty-First Century program that we run at the complex, the JFKFM complex, that's paid out of that grant. And right now, their head count, which I can share with you, is around eighty. So we do, we do know what the enrollment will be there, but the other programs, we're not sure yet.
Any other questions, Tammy?
I guess I have a question. Does, so will this apply to extended school year special ed folks as well?
Yes. ESY has paid forty-five an hour for, for years from what I was told, which is part of the competition we have with our own programs because if we're paying thirty-five.
If I could get paid here, I might make the move.
Yeah, so they've been paying forty-five.
So it says up to, what, what's the up to? Is it just forty-five?
Because we had some individuals, because of the licensure relief that the commissioner has provided, we have some people that have like an emergency license that has not gone through a pre-approved program to get their initial license. So because of that and because of the subs situation, like the long-term subs versus the permanent subs versus the actually licensed teacher, we set up to forty-five because those that were licensed and had an initial license, we did the forty-five, those that had like a temporary or a long-term sub situation, we paid thirty-five. So we did, we were able to use a little bit of wiggle room there so that our licensed folks got paid a little bit more because they've done the work, they've done, you know, they should, they should.
My question would be, like, where are we getting this money from the budget? Is it some of it the ESER grant?
Yes, the, the bulk of our summer programming is from ESER funds and the Boys and Girls Club partnership that we have, Bellingham is going to split that with us again. And the costs will be at a, it will be less this year because we're going to have two teachers and two counselors instead of four teachers and two counselors. So to your head count question, we already have a little bit of a sense in some of them, but.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of moving the summer pay rate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, one abstention and that passes.
That concludes my report.
And now to, did you bring your reading glasses, gentlemen?
Matt, what do you have for us?
All good information.
All right.
So the first report that I have in your package is our total revenues. And as you can see, things are moving smoothly. We're only, when you look at such big numbers, it's funny to say, we're only like six million or so away from our target, but we still have our, our final, our final assessments coming in from the towns. They're actually due on, they're supposed to be due on the sixteenth. If anyone from the offices are watching, make sure they're in by the sixteenth, thank you very much. And then, but, but revenues are coming in as anticipated. As we've said before, we do have a couple of them that are higher than anticipated already, which has been a, a positive thing for us. And we don't expect to see any shortfalls. Most of those ones that you see that still have some larger negatives, the state pays out like transportation three times a year, so we haven't seen that last, you know, we haven't seen a last reimbursement, similar to circuit breaker funds and some of the other ones. But we are in excellent shape with regards to our revenue stream. Are there any questions about the revenues? And actually, you can see here the numbers that I was speaking to regarding the, the athletics and the music because the budget was done by, we, we had finished the budget by March and before the determination was made to continue the reduced fees for this year. So you'll see the actual collections.
So Matt, on the athletic user fees, where it says current projection, is, that's where we typically were.
Correct.
So Erin, did you catch that line forty-five and forty-six?
Yeah, I just marked them here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, fund code.
Yeah, so you could see that thirty, so you could see the difference between them.
Yeah.
The amounts remaining, you'll see there's thirty-four, two oh one remaining in, in athletics and nine, nine nine forty. So that's where I'm saying, usually it'll be between forty and thou, forty and fifty thousand if we cut it in half.
And at this point, all of the user fees are paid, are, are collected for the school year, so that shows our contribution.
The next report that you have is the expenditure review. That's across two pages. You have your general fund expenditure report, which is the two-sided page, which we tried to make a little bigger for visibility. We don't have any problems. Again, if you look at the bottom line, you can see that we're still showing that we're coming out in, in the black, so to speak, even, even with that fifty thousand dollars E and D for OPEB. The grant, so you'll see, typically this doesn't happen, but if you do look at the grant fund expenditure page, according to our, our bookkeeping right now, we're in the red for the Fund Two Forty. That's not going to stay that way. So the, the final calculation on the bottom of the grant fund page doesn't match the general fund page because it's, the general fund page shows what we are going to, to get at the end of all of the general fund expenditures. And typically, the, the grant funds are always a wash. Whatever we get in, we spend. So there really is no difference. So that bottom line at the grant fund page should match the general fund page. However, we have that forty-four oh seven showing in the red in, in Fund Two Forty, which is just showing that discrepancy there. That being said, you can see that the numbers are still solidly in the black. In fact, as we are closing the books, we have purchase orders that have been open purchase orders for the, for the district. Teen has been working with the administrative assistants. Most of them are closed at this point, but we're still just doing some final closing up of those purchase orders. And more than likely, Dr. DeValco and I will be coming to the school committee for certain expenditures if we're seeing that we will have additional, you know, a significant amount of funds still available, that we would be trying to purchase some of those things that, like we were just speaking about, putting some of the money towards the Mill, the Millville Elementary School walkway, or it could potentially go towards pieces of the playground work. We also would have other material costs that the district would be potentially looking, but those would be presented to the school committee for approval in the June, during the June meeting.
Prepaying the tuition.
Prepaying the tuition, like we're talking about.
Tammy, go ahead.
Matt, can you clarify the textbook? Is that the, is that a curriculum?
So that's the math curriculum that we started pre-purchasing already.
And that's, is that the E and D, what, where are we, we're paying that somewhere?
No, we're just paying it out of this year's budget. We knew originally, based on the teacher retirements or transitions, and we had significant amounts that we were overbudgeted already. So we agreed that we were going to purchase the math curriculum upfront to take that cost off of the FY twenty-three budget when we were developing it.
So will there ever be a time where that's not red? Like, will?
No.
Will we move money to that line or something?
At the end of the, at the end of the year.
We'll balance everything out.
It will.
I don't like those big, big red numbers.
There's about eighty thousand that the Department of Ed is paying directly to our math, K to eight math vendor that we don't have to pay.
So, so actually, I'll, I'll, for everyone's edification, if you go back to the general fund expenditure review, on the bottom of this, that's the double-sided.
Yep.
Right, on the bottom of the second page, you'll see totals. That's a summary of all of the different function series. So the way that the Department of Ed lists their expenses is in series. So you'll see the thousands, series is the administrative costs, two thousand is instructional, three thousand, so on and so forth. We actually don't need to move any money from line to line to line. It's only if they're crossing series. So if we had budgeted for curriculum materials, professional development and textbooks, and we overspend in textbooks, but we underspent in the professional development, that's all in the same bucket of expenses or expense type. So at least in the Department of Ed's eyes. So we don't need to approve any transfer of money across those lines. But if we're moving money across series, like we say, okay, we're a little bit in the red in administrative, we need to get approval from the school committee to transfer funds to, to cover that cost because, you know, the instructional funds weren't originally designated to pay for administrative costs.
So the totals, there's really what we need to worry about?
It's the totals, yes, the totals, correct.
Okay.
Correct. The totals are where we will be looking.
Okay, I remember that now.
Any questions on expenditure review?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So we hand everybody a Chromebook, so how many actual textbooks are we buying still? Do they still have a paper or hard copy textbook?
Yeah, we do. The, the programs have the digital option and then also the, like the hard copy and we, we get both.
And sometimes the ancillary materials for the curriculum are, we, it gets budgeted as textbook, like textbook costs because it's connected to the math, the math program. But it might be some other hands-on pieces that get put into that bulk purchase of like textbooks. So when we're ordering the math curriculum ahead of time, we're not really piecing, we're ordering the, the whole program and we're getting everything and we charge that to textbooks.
Okay.
You also have in your package the personnel changes and that is to be placed on file. That concludes my financial reports. Moving on to facilities, we did have a little bit of a snafu at the high school. You can see that we had two of the heating coils that need repairing. Scott is working to get those repaired and we have the estimate. Because we've been having those problems with Riverdale and their responsiveness, we are also getting a quote from Industrial Burner to make sure that we are getting, A, competitive pricing and B, someone that's going to come in quickly and fix the, the problem. The irrigation systems, you can see Scott's been really trying to make sure that we're tending to those fields that we put the time and effort into. The irrigation located on the track and the lower soccer fields have been brought back online for the summer. There have been a bunch of several, a bunch of sprinkler heads that need to be replaced. And in conversation with the company, they were saying if we add a filtration device to the system, that that would help stop the sprinkler heads from breaking. It's not an extensive cost. It's like a few hundred dollars or maybe a thousand dollars for this filtration piece that goes into the system and that would be significantly less than consistently replacing sprinkler heads. So. Again, the work on the dugout continues. I don't know if they've been watching the temperature, okay, but I think we're getting to the point where they're going to do the, the seal coating on the, on the tennis courts. Scott is, and Scott has been in contact with the company, but I, I'm hoping that by the next update we have, they'll be done. You can see.
I'm gonna play that recording over for you.
You certainly can.
He said he's hoping.
I said hoping.
It is getting warmer. It's getting warmer.
And after the June meeting, I will have no further updates on the tennis courts.
That'll not be until the June meeting.
They'll be done.
They'll be done.
They'll be done.
They'll be done.
They will be done. No, they're, it's, they're already in the queue.
We know where to find you, Mr. Erin.
Absolutely. And I will never, I will never be out of contact. But we, we know that they, we are on their priority list. The Hartnett Middle School, Scott just wanted to give an update. There's the, the monitoring system that's there. We're trying to get it, get that repaired because Ethan has to continually go into the tank and put a dipstick in and make sure we're checking the levels.
It's still old-fashioned. It works, though.
It does. It's, if you know what you're doing, you can actually get that assessment. But the digital monitoring system is going to be repaired so that we don't have to do that. And just an update kind of on the process and the physical piece of the facilities, but also on our project with concurrently realigning our elementary schools. The movers came in on the ninth and they assessed the rooms between the complex and Millville Elementary School. And we're getting the quote prepared to make that final move of the second grade classrooms all going over to MES. And then we'll have the complete reconfiguration of our Millville Elementary School serving PK to two and the complex serving three through five. And are there questions on the facilities? And then we have a number of facilities requests. Not sure if the committee wants to review them and then potentially accept them as a package or if you want to go one by one.
So it looks like we have the BMYBL basketball camp request, which is something we post every year. That's the first week in August in the middle school. And then the second one is the Blackstone Town Meeting. They used the honor triumph for their meeting. Oh, there's the third one.
There is.
BMEPTO, Boys Special Lady Event.
I love how that name just like gets funnier and funnier over you. Don't even try to make it one word.
I was looking at this earlier, wondering why they didn't.
Children and adults.
Although we call it the dance.
It's two sessions. Sorry, do they dance? This one's not a dance.
Oh, okay.
It's a, a special.
Oh, it's the event, I apologize.
Movies.
Oh, no.
Two sessions for movies.
I apologize.
Any questions?
The girls was a dance, so that makes sense.
The last one was, the last one was the dance. And then we could call this one the movie event.
I make a motion to, I mean, I would make them together. A motion to approve the three facility requests.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Second by Tammy. Any questions or discussion?
Just pending approval through the calendar people, whoever that might be, that we don't have any overlap.
We're the last ones to get it now, right?
Yes. All of the administrative assistants have checked the scheduling calendar for the buildings.
So no conflicts.
And these have been reviewed and there are no conflicts.
So the motion to approve the three facility requests is on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And all we have left is Squishmitty Forum. Tara?
Just actually tying into the BMEPTO, I want to say thank you to Matt, our custodian from MES for stepping in at the girls' dance on the thirtieth. He was great, helpful, helping with setup, there through the event and cleanup. So, yeah, he was very helpful. So it was, we appreciated him being present. Jason, I know, I think your update had said the senior signs are coming. Are they going to be here for this weekend?
We hope so. We hope so. We, we hope so, yeah. I know Jesse's been super helpful in trying to coordinate with the, with the vendor and.
Before family funding?
We're trying. I know, we're pushing.
That's a little early, right?
Well, it's only two weeks before graduation.
Yeah, it's like a week till graduation. Yeah, so we're hoping that they'll be, but we're not sure yet.
They're tight, yeah.
Yeah, very, very tight. You may see me out there tomorrow night in the dark with a flashlight banging the things in the, yeah. We'll see.
That's great.
Yeah, those are great to have, so I'm glad we just avoided to keep doing that yearly. So it's nice. And then playground, Tammy, you had mentioned that the capital committee, I'm talking about playgrounds, I know there was a request or a comment made with PTO about like putting money towards a couple of repairs. So I don't know if we should consider that on the PTO side or if we should hold off or maybe just reach out to you guys.
Yeah, let's just work in conjunction and as we get some more information, then we can, we can process that.
It's going that way. Thank you, Matt.
We have another one too. Sorry about that. We don't want to leave those unsigned. So this is for.
I didn't know there were two folders.
All right, anyone else for committee, do you?
I'm done. Oh, I will say it was pretty cool. Fifth grade went on a field trip today.
Woo! Where'd they go?
Gillette, I didn't talk to my son yet, but they did like some kind of weather.
Yes, it was a weather event.
Beamed event, so. And I know other grades, especially elementary, were sorry that everyone didn't get to go on a field trip this year, but because of COVID and timing of restrictions, quick decision was made. Fifth graders are pretty much done elementary school, haven't had a field trip in two years, so it's kind of why they got to go on one. But the other grades all had like virtual and like assemblies. So hopefully next year, everyone gets the full field trip experience.
Anyone else for school committee forum?
I would, I'll finally say congratulations to Jane Reggio.
Oh, she is not here today.
It's official, it's a Monday night, right? And thank the, to two Millville residents who stepped up for filling the vacant positions as, it's, so far it's been quite a pleasant experience serving on this committee. But yeah, I wanted to give the, just, it was great working with Jane over the years and, and her dedication and hard work on behalf of the school district. All of you guys that I've worked with in the past was, it's not an easy, it's not an easy job for sure. So I just wanted to give Jane my farewell for now.
And good luck to all of our high school students taking AP exams this week. Either good luck on the upcoming one or now you can take a.
For us, and good luck on, good luck on when you get your grades back.
Don't stress until July.
I know.
My son took his and you wouldn't have known it.
You know, I mean, people say that like, you know, people will argue they're not beneficial, but both of my kids have saved money on tuition and were able to kind of double up Gen Eds and that kind of stuff. So AP, they were beneficial at the Lemieux household, so good luck, have fun. But thank you to the Millville town residents and leaders for approving our budget. That is always good news to hear.
That was a nice meeting.
It was.
Nice meeting, under an hour and no holds. The, the meeting progressed pretty smoothly, so. Let's hope for those in future years.
Hope Blackstone goes with that same kind of timeline.
Well, at the end of the talk, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of arguing.
No.
Which happened in the past.
And a lot of that, I, I would give, you know, especially with our school budget, Jason and Matt, a lot of credit for that, just for keeping the communication open all year. And, you know, it didn't come down to the last three months of this is our budget and justifying it. The communication that you, and the rapport you've built with both of our towns, I believe, is paying off immensely for, for, for the school budget. I mean, the town is also in a better place than it was a few years ago, so financially things are, are working for now.
We're already planning FY twenty-five.
Right.
We are. Meeting's in June and July.
So I'll just remind everyone that we have our family fun day on Sunday, one, one PM to four PM. Jason, do you need our help with anything? Where, where will you be?
Yeah, so the, like, the thought of, like, this is stuff is, I'm not good at this stuff. So thank God for, for Tara and Sarah Tasker because they have been like God sends in all of us. But I'll be there about eleven and, you know, we've got a good layout. We know where everything's going to be. I've got a little sheet with little, you know, table numbers and I think I got it all set up. And I think we're okay, but I would never say no if people wanted to come early and just kind of check in and make sure.
Where is it? Is it in the front of the high school?
Yes, so.
The parking in the rear? Where do you want?
Yep, we're going to do parking around the back side of the building and we're going to have a lot of the tables, crafts, food in the courtyard and under the A wing. And then we're doing a lot of the yard games, like cornhole, those things, near the flagpole. And, and then express football is running some football games up on.
On the field?
Yep, on the field. And then we'll have jazz ensembles playing, kind of out front. And we're going to have the book fair. That's going to be right out front. It's going to be really cool, like really. I think, I mean, the community has totally come together around trying to, to do something really great. And so, yeah, I mean, I think it's, we have music, food, crafts, sports. It's going to be fun. Wear your charger stuff, so make sure you have that. I hope we have the senior signs up. I'll let you know if Sunday morning you want to come out and bang signs. It might be then, I don't know. But we may have to wait till next week on those. I hope not.
It's BYOH.
Oh, and the other thing we're doing, we're going to be giving tours.
Bring your own hammer.
Bring your own hammer, yes.
We're going to be doing tours of the high school throughout the day so that the community people show up that, you know, are interested in seeing it, either want to take a trip down memory lane or look at, you know, the asbestos tiles at the same time. So we need to really get people to see.
Who is leading those tours?
I'm going to be doing a bunch of them, yes, yep, yep. Jill Falis is very positive, which is wonderful. And but as we're trying to show what we need, you know, it's hard for her.
Yeah, it's going to be a balance there, right? Like obviously, we're proud that we can.
We are.
Do what we can do, but also reminding people there are needs.
There are definite needs, yeah.
So I do think the best thing to do is to get people in and to check it out. And so we're going to, we're going to offer tours throughout the day. So buy a book, grab some pizza, get a freezy, play football, go for a tour. Going to get it all in.
Okay. And I just want to circle back to what we talked about right before Erin got here. We changed our May twenty-sixth meeting to a workshop. And I was able to get MASC to come in and do the charting the course for the four new members. And the rest of us will join as a refresher, but they'd like to start at four PM. Will that work for you on a, on a brand of Thursday?
We'll make it work.
Okay.
I'll block it on my work calendar.
So four PM here, we'll have it set up to work. It won't be a formal setting like this. We'll have a workshop and we'll do some team building and.
Food always works.
Food, we will do food. We'll talk about food separately. And I also wanted to mention, our student rep mentioned it, but the National Honor Society induction, we are usually invited to, so you'll probably get an email from Mr. Rowe with maybe tomorrow or early next week, but it is next Thursday at.
Seven.
Seven PM at the high school auditorium. And usually we are invited as school committee members. And we're typically invited to all of the senior events too, if you want to mark your calendars for a senior week. We typically attend awards night and graduation. We can sit together or you can sit with your families if you're there for family. Any questions about that or?
I can resend all the senior dates if you can.
Yeah, if you could.
Yep.
I don't remember who got that list.
I can definitely do that.
Chuck has senior. Yeah, she's senior too, yeah.
Oh, you do? So you will have special seats at graduation.
You have special seats.
If you choose to use them.
And you get to hand out diplomas if you want.
And your dads.
Yeah.
Cool.
Definitely picture op and diploma. All right, any other committee member forum? So our next meeting, we did change to the workshop, May twenty-sixth, four PM, still here. And then June ninth, we will resume our six PM school committee meeting. Jason, you're going to arrange one-on-one meetings with everyone before the workshop?
Yes, so you'll get something from Catherine tomorrow to block the half hour. If you can't come in, great. If not, we can do it Zoom, we can do it over the phone. It's better to come in just so we can kind of sit and, and connect, but you know, I'm open to other things if you want to do a Zoom or a phone call. I know some of your schedules now.
Looking at the one who I guess.
Signs up last.
It's all good.
Catherine sends the reminders.
All good, we make it work.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
Motion made by Tara, second by Tammy.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Goodness.
Tammy, can I go send you your paper towels?
Oh, sure.